I'll note for all in attendance today that today's meeting is being live streamed on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order. Without objection, we will proceed with the agenda as has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is report of the chairman. I'll have a few things to note. One, on May the 15th, NCPC and the Department of Defense had our annual get-together. We get-together once a year, usually in the spring, to talk about upcoming projects and any changes in NCPC process that they should be aware of. As you know, DOD submits no small number of items before us. So the agenda that day, we updated them on the submission guideline changes, also on the parking study that we have underway and is always of interest to their facilities. And we also discussed the issues surrounding federal properties and floodplains. Then we heard from them and their upcoming projects. We heard from Military District Washington, the Air Force District, and the Naval District Washington. And then the Washington Headquarters Service wrapped it up. So it was a good couple-hour meeting. It's always good to coordinate with them to make sure that we understand what's on their agenda and what is changing with us so that we all move together pretty efficiently. Also, on May 15th, NCPC took the lead with other partners to do a program of reconsidering modernist landscapes. It was held at the National Building Museum. It was a credit to Ms. Costa here who took the lead on it. Mr. Galas and Mr. May were in attendance as well. It was a very good event. And then last, I would note that, please note that our July meeting is actually on July the 13th. We pushed it back a week due to the Independence Day holiday. So make sure that your calendars are updated that July 13th is our next meeting. That's all I have. Any questions? Agenda item number two is report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I just have a few items to note for the public. We're holding two meetings this month to brief the public and agencies on the draft submission guidelines and environmental procedures, on Tuesday, June 13th at 6:00 p.m., and on Thursday, June 15th at 9:30 a.m. Both meetings will take place here at NCPC. The public comment period for the submission guidelines end on July 10th, and the comment period for the environmental procedures concludes on July 14th. Additional information can be found on our website. On Thursday, June 8th at 4:00 p.m., the Smithsonian and NCPC will host a fourth joint NEPA Section 106 consulting parties meeting, so that interested persons may view a new stone option, which is called Colonial Rose Granite. The meeting will take place at the National Air and Space Museum, a mock-up site which is on the northeast corner of the museum's terrace. Written comments may be submitted through June 14th. Commissioners will also have an opportunity to take a site visit prior to NCPC's July meeting. We expect this to be on the next agenda. Additional information is also available on our website. We have two summer associates who've joined NCPC's Policy Research Division. First, we have Melanie Stern, who is a master's in urban design candidate at the Harvard University Graduate School of Design. She will work on our update of the Comprehensive Plan Open Space Element, as well as our Commemorative Works research. And Teresa Tinta is a candidate for the Bachelor of Science in Geography at the University of Maryland College Park. She will assist with the development of our 3D zoning GIS application.
Welcome aboard.
And that concludes my presentation for today.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Acosta?
What's 3D zoning?
It's a 3D GIS map.
Oh, okay. It was like, that's, I mean, it sounded like it was a virtual reality game or something. Thank you.
Agenda item number three is the legislative update. Ms. Skylar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have two items to report. The first is House Joint Resolution 57, which was introduced on May 18th of this year and referred to the House Committee on Foreign Affairs. This joint resolution expresses the sense of Congress that a museum should be established and operated on underutilized land in the District of Columbia for the purpose of memorializing victims of communist regimes, educating Americans and foreign visitors about the ideology of communism and its history, and encouraging visitors to meet the challenges of the human rights abuses presented by communist regimes today. The second item, Senate Bill 926, is called the Global War on Terrorism Act. This was introduced in the Senate on April 25th and referred to the Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources. This bill authorizes the Global War on Terror Foundation to establish a memorial to the global war on terrorism in the District of Columbia and its environs. It excludes this bill from compliance with two definitions in the Commemorative Works Act. Those are the definitions of a military commemorative work and commemorative works commemorating events and individuals. The reason for this being that this particular commemoration might not be able to meet these definitions, the first being that a commemorative work to a war or similar military conflict may not be authorized until at least 10 years after the officially designated end of such war conflict. It's not clear that this has ever been declared at an end. The second definition, works commemorating events and individuals, holds a commemorative work commemorating an event, individual, or group may not be authorized until after the 25th anniversary of the event, death of the individual, or death of the last surviving group member. Again, this particular commemorative work may not be able to meet this. Finally, with the exception of this exclusion from compliance with the two definitions, all other requirements of the Commemorative Works Act would apply such that it will come to the commission for review.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Skylar? Agenda item number four is the consent calendar. We have three items. Item 4A is the approval of the preliminary and final plans for Arlington House rehabilitation located in Arlington, and it's submitted by the National Park Service. Item 4B is approval of the preliminary and final site development plans for a fire safety system antenna at the HUD headquarters located in southwest Washington. It was brought to us by Department of General Services, I'm sorry, General Services Administration. And item 4C is comments to the council of the District of Columbia on the district's proposed budget and financial plan for FY 2018 to 2023. Mr. Cash.
I'd like to move Agenda Item 4C to the action items section.
Mr. Cash moves that we move Item 4C to the action item. This is for purposes of an amendment. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of moving 4C to the open session? Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is moved. So remaining, is there a motion on the remaining two consent calendar items there before us?
I've moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is approved. So we will go now to the open session item, and we will return to Item 4C, which is for comments to the council of the district on the district's proposed budget and financial plan for FY 2018 to 2023. Mr. Cash.
So I would like to move an amendment that I believe has been circulated already here on the day.
On the desk before you is an amendment. I think these are technical or clarifying in nature, but I'll return the floor to Mr. Cash.
So I wanted to pull this off. It's fairly minor, but anything with the district's budget, we like to say a few words about. But as originally submitted, the project summary section said that this was submitted by the mayor and the council. We just wanted to clarify that technically this was submitted by the mayor because this was her proposed capital plan for the next five years, for the capital improvement plan, because the whole point of this is supposed to be NCPC comments back to the council in our adoption of it. So the first correction on here would be in the very first sentence of the EDR, which would just remove the council from that, just to clarify that this was actually comments on what the mayor had provided, and just a little bit more on that. So I mean, the council actually did pass this budget last Tuesday, so it's not quite timely, and I don't know if that spakes to an issue of when the district transmitted it or when it just came to our attention, because there were quite a few changes to some of the things that were then suggested or praised in the EDR, including, I think, the streetcars were zeroed out, for example, and there were a few other changes. So just why sometimes the comments are good on the front end. The second item was on page four of the EDR, and it's in the amendment two. So as submitted, the EDR was just talking about the process for how the council gets its budget approved, and the EDR said that it's approved by the council and then sent to Congress for approval, which we've passed a budget autonomy law a few years ago that's been upheld in the court so far, which essentially says we still send our budget up there, but it's for passive review. It's not like the old act of approval, in our view. So I just thought that kind of in the interest of defending our budget autonomy, it would be good to stay at least silent on that point in how that's done. So those were just the two kind of minor amendments that I'd like to see go in there.
I take it you have a motion to all those amendments?
Yes.
Mr. Cash has moved those amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Now items are open for discussion.
I just want to mention, as I understand it, the council took their first vote on the budget, and they will be taking a second vote, so our comments would still be received by the council before it's finalized.
Yeah, so that's correct. So we took our first vote on Tuesday. We've kind of made it, and we've only been doing this new way for two years. We kind of, it's supposed to be substantially similar, just because we don't want to be making major change to the budget. So I'll acknowledge that, yeah, there still is an opportunity. But I think that some of the issues, like streetcar, for example, could have been, it might have been nice to have those comments before we zeroed it out. So, not that I would have changed it.
Sure. I mean, I think what we want to make sure is that our process here works in conjunction with the council's process, and the comments are timely. So I don't know if that means adjusting something in the future years, so it happens before the first vote, but.
I definitely appreciate that.
Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the council asked for a letter from the Office of Planning for consistency with the comprehensive plan, the district elements as well. So we, our staffs actually send the CIP budget and submit stuff through the mayor as well. So we've been able to certify the projects being in line with the comprehensive plan, the district elements as well.
Further discussion? Hearing none has been?
I just need to withdraw from any approval as it relates to support for Walter Reed, since I'm involved in that directly, the redevelopment on page three of the EDR. So I'd like to vote positively on everything else, except for my conflict of interest.
Let me ask Ms. Skylar.
I think from a legal perspective, the better approach would be for Commissioner Galas to recuse himself from the entire vote, rather than just the one-line item in the report. That would be my recommendation.
I will do that.
Okay. Since there is no further discussion, all in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And one abstention. Now, what's before us is the EDR is amended. Is there a motion on the EDR is amended? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR is amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes with one abstention. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cash. Agenda item 5A is the Carnegie Library Rehabilitation proposed by Events DC. We have Mr. Fliss.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Events DC and Independent Instrumentality of the District of Columbia has submitted concept plans for the rehabilitation of the Carnegie Library for your review and comment. The concept design presents an opportunity to rehabilitate and modernize the Carnegie Library to accommodate a new retail and educational uses. Apple is the expected tenant, and the project is anticipated to be submitted for your preliminary and final review by later in this fall. So for those of you who may not know, the Carnegie Library is located at 801 K Street Northwest in downtown Washington, DC, in Mount Vernon Square. This is located just south of the Washington Convention Center. As you can see on this map, Massachusetts Avenue and New York Avenue converge at the square to create a visually prominent location in this part of the city. And zooming in just a little bit closer, you can see how Carnegie Library, the building here, sits in the middle of Mount Vernon Square, with the convention center to the north across Mount Vernon Place. Events DC holds administrative jurisdiction over the library building, while Mount Vernon Square, designated as Reservation Eight, remains federally owned but administered by the District of Columbia. And here on the screen, you can see a few images of the existing building. Again, Events DC retains office space in the Carnegie Library and uses the public spaces for events. The other tenant is the Historical Society of Washington, which operates its research library, exhibit galleries, and administrative offices in the building. Following the rehabilitation, the building will be leased jointly by the Historical Society, as well as Apple, which will operate a retail, events, and educational facility in the building. These are some photographs of the existing conditions of many of the exterior character-defining features of the building. The rehabilitation proposed under the concept plan will provide much-needed attention to maintaining the original components of this National Register listed property. The design of the building reflects a Beaux-Arts style, which you can see here on the screen, which became fashionable at the end of the 19th century and the early 20th centuries, particularly for landmark buildings such as city halls, courthouses, and libraries. Constructed between 1899 and 1902 with funds provided by philanthropist Andrew Carnegie, the Carnegie Library was listed in the District of Columbia Inventory of Sites in 1964 and the National Register of Historic Places in 1969. The nomination recognized the building's significance as one of the many buildings given to American cities by Carnegie to promote the library system. It also reflects the growth of the DC Public Library system from humble beginnings to one which now includes this somewhat imposing Beaux-Arts building in Mount Vernon Square. Once completed, the Carnegie Library opened in 1902 as Washington's central public library, and it operated as the main library of the District of Columbia until the demand for a larger facility led to the construction of the Martin Luther King Jr. Library on Ninth Street. In 1971, when the library operations were transferred to the new MLK Library, the Carnegie was fenced off and vacated until 1977, when the University of the District of Columbia purchased the building and completed a major rehabilitation. This included adding a public entrance to the north side of the building. In 2001, the Historical Society of Washington were granted a lease for the building and completed rehabilitation to house its headquarters, as well as the city museum. Additional alterations occurred to the north elevation, including a new canopy. In 2004, the city museum closed, and in 2006, the US government transferred administrative jurisdiction of Mount Vernon Square to the DC government. Today, the Historical Society continues to occupy office space and exhibit space in the building, while Events DC, as I mentioned, has office space and uses the public areas for events. So with that history and context in mind, I'm going to walk you through some of the project considerations, as well as staff's analysis and recommendations. And these include some major components, including historic environmental aspects, exterior and site improvements, as well as the interior improvements. First, I'd just like to note that because NCPC has an approval responsibility, NCPC is the lead federal agency for compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, as well as the National Historic Preservation Act. Staff has been working with the applicant on an environmental assessment, which will be prepared this summer to evaluate impacts from the project. We note that the EA will be evaluating a number of topic areas. These include pedestrian access, transportation, historic resources, landscape and site improvements, and other land uses. We've also initiated the Section 106 process for historic resources and held our first consulting parties meeting about two weeks ago. We note that through this process, a determination of adverse effects will be made, and that, if necessary, a memorandum agreement will be prepared to address those effects. So regarding the proposed improvements, in general, the project scope is limited to rehabilitation of the building exterior and changes to nonhistoric elements. Much of the proposed work will be on the interior of the building and is therefore not subject to NCPC approval. Under the proposed plan, and you can see here on the screen, the glazing on the historic skylights will be repaired or replaced, and the roof will be repaired as well. The 2003 clear story addition, shown here, over the atrium, which was infilled, will also be removed. The original wood windows will be repaired, and nonoriginal glazing will be repaired or replaced and made operable. In addition, the exterior stone masonry will also be cleaned and restored. So here you can see a rendering of the south elevation of the building once the rehabilitation is completed. The exterior work will help maintain the original and historic character-defining features of the building, and that work should be in keeping with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. In particular, historic fabric will be retained where possible or replaced with in-kind materials if necessary. So I had mentioned previously that the north elevation of the Carnegie Library was altered by both the University of the District of Columbia, as well as the city museum projects. And this was through the addition of a stair, a canopy, and some signage. Under the proposed concept, the existing stairs, awning, and signage, which are shown here, will be removed. In its place, a new open stair will be added to improve access to this entrance of the building, and the windows that were modified previously will also be replaced and retrofitted. So you can see in this elevation, the proposed stair with the existing condition in the upper This is just a detail that shows the concept for the new open stair on the north elevation. The stair will have two series of steps here and here, with paired central handrails and separated by a landing, which will also terminate the main landing of the entrance. Again, these changes are proposed in an area that's already been subject to modification. I'll also note that as part of the ongoing design discussions, the exact type of windows abutting the entrance have not been determined, but will be subject to further discussion. And so here's an elevation of the north side of the building as envisioned after the rehabilitation. And again, you can see the proposed stair here in the foreground. And then very quickly, here's a drawing of the existing and proposed east elevation. Again, no significant changes are proposed on the elevation, although the atrium piece will be removed here, and again, the stair will be replaced. And here again, you can see on the east elevation, the same condition. So while the concept plan is generally limited to the building itself, the applicant has indicated that minor alterations may be made to the hardscape elements to provide increased compliance with accessibility and other code requirements. The applicant is proposing to modify the plaza adjacent to the south of elevation by adding steps at both the upper and lower stairs, as well as decreasing the slope from 5% to 2% in the plaza between the stairs. In terms of planting, the concept shows proposed new perennials and shrub plantings around the library building itself, as well as areas for potential stormwater management plantings. Staff recommends the commission request that the applicant continue to explore opportunities for additional landscape improvements, as well as pedestrian amenities, as part of the NEPA and Section 106 process. Also, at this time, the applicant has indicated that signage will be relatively modest as part of the project. However, staff further recommends that Events DC provide additional information on exterior lighting and signage as the project further develops. And also, in addition to the site discussions, I'll note that there have been some public comments about improving traffic and pedestrian access to and around the square. This includes, in particular, providing a mid-block connection between the north side of the building to the convention center. Staff will continue to work with the applicant and through the NEPA process to evaluate some of these considerations. And so moving on now to some of the interior improvements. As proposed on the concept, the interior of the building will be rehabilitated, including the removal of the nonoriginal infill construction throughout the building. Again, primarily dating from 2003, the city museum project, these interior alterations included the enclosure of the central atrium with a museum gallery, offices, and clear story extension. The applicant is proposing to remove these alterations, including the clear story addition, which is currently visible from the exterior. The new atrium will be enclosed with a flat skylight, shown here, which will be positioned below the existing roofline, so that it will not be visible from the surrounding streetscape. So just to give you a sense of the interior work, here is the space currently looking north towards the convention center. And then this is a view looking towards the south. This is a rendering looking south from the same, relatively the same position, showing the new openings on the second floor, with the existing, with new side bridge passageways, exposed brick walls, and then the original window openings. And this is a section showing the relationship of the new atrium and the space to the north on the second floor. On the right, you can see a proposed rendering of that atrium space with the new skylight on the roof. So overall, the proposed exterior modifications are generally modest and are intended to rehabilitate the existing Carnegie Library building in a way that is sensitive to its historic character and legacy. As such, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission support Events DC's vision to rehabilitate and modernize the Carnegie Library, and notes that Events DC proposal requires balancing historic preservation, planning, and design considerations. Regarding the building exterior, the commission notes that any proposed work should maintain the original character-defining features of this National Register listed property, and that work should be in keeping with the Secretary of Interior Standards of Rehabilitation. Further, the proposed changes on the north elevation are in an area that has already been modified, and that nonhistoric elements, such as the stairs and awning, will be removed, and corrective changes are proposed as a result of the previous alterations. Regarding the site, the commission requests that the applicant explore opportunities for additional landscape improvements and pedestrian amenities to be explored through the NEPA and Section 106 process, and requests Events DC provide further information on the proposed exterior lighting and signage. And regarding the NEPA and 106 process, the commission notes that additional consultation will continue, and determination of adverse effects remains to be determined. And finally, that an EA will be prepared to evaluate environmental impacts from the proposed project. That concludes my presentation. Representatives from Events DC, Apple, and the consulting team are also available for questions.
Thank you very much. What did you say about signage?
At this time, it's proposed to be relatively modest, but as the project continues to develop, we would like to see more information about what's being proposed.
And the 106 is likely to be wrapped up.
Will need to be wrapped up before you take a final approval.
Yeah.
So sometime this fall.
By the fall? Okay. Questions? Mr. Shaw.
Can I comment?
No comments.
Okay. So I think we're, and also having the Historic Preservation Office under Office of Planning, we're excited about the restoration of this. In my travels, I've been to the ones in New York and the one in Madrid, where they took historic structures and renovated them, and they have a very strong attention to detail. I think that the big thing, and we're really in support of this, around the idea of the landscaping and the grounds. The grounds are also designated historic as well, and we want to make sure that pedestrian access, improvements to that, that it's not just a pretty building and a mediocre landscape, that those two things go together. So that's one of the recommendations that we are going to really continue to push for with me sitting on this commission and with the Historic Preservation Office.
Mr. Shaw, I wanted to follow up with a question. I was, you know, in reading the notes, I was curious why the coordinating committee hasn't met with the Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, yet. Is that procedurally the way it works, or?
No, the SHPO participates as part of the coordinating committee. Usually at a concept review, they've not provided a final determination, because it's so early in the process. But they have been participating throughout the work.
Okay. I must have misread when it says accept the District of Columbia State Historic Preservation Office.
They're just indicating that they're not signing off on the project yet, because it's still going through the review process.
Okay. Since I have the floor, can I ask one other question?
Could you please go to slide 16? I just have a clarification question. The monitors on the roof of the building, the two at the top, right? So those exist now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's just hard to see it from the existing image there. Maybe you have another?
Let me see if I can find it.
I thought I, it's sort of, you see it from the section here.
Yeah, so you're referring to these?
Yeah.
So there's an, the existing entry and the clear story that was added, just kind of pops up in front of it, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm interested in the access, handicap access. I knew you mentioned it, but I'm assuming it's there, ramps and that.
Yeah, there is existing. Yeah, there is existing, let me get through a plan.
Some of our steps.
Yeah. I know that there is existing ramps on both sides, and perhaps if Events DC or one of the representatives want to talk about how, or the architect wants to speak to the details.
Good afternoon. My name is Hani Hassan. I'm with Bayer Blender Bell, and we are the architects for the project. The answer is yes, we do have ADA accessibility to the building. On the south side, there is a ramp where the cursor is pointing, and we have done also other improvements on the south plaza where it's currently, the slope is in excess of 5%, which is actually rather unsafe. So we are looking into adding steps at the bottom, at the bottom and the top tier in order to flatten that slope to 2%, which becomes even more accessible. So we do have ADA accessibility to the building.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question. When will we see the final landscape plan?
Well, under the current schedule, we would come back before you sometime this fall.
So it'll be, that'll be final? I mean, it'll be with the final approval?
Potentially, or, yeah.
Okay. I don't, I have anything bad to say. I have lots of good things to say, but I think they're pretty obvious. We have a little bloggy thing in my, in an internal blog in my office, and somebody brought up this building, and we had a very robust discussion about the public use part of it and how that would, how that would gel with an Apple Store. I think it's a great fit, and I would like to know a little bit more, not now, but later, about the landscape and also, I don't really, I'm not really clear on the educational programs that keep, that are talked about in the EDR. So I hope we can hear a little bit more about that. And whatever happens, I hope that, I drove by it today to see if people were out there. Well, because it's the first time we've seen the sun in so long, I figured, well, okay, people are going to be out there today, and they were in its current state. So I can imagine this being, you know, walking many, many, many blocks to get there if it's done right and minimally and sort of left alone because it's pretty successful the way it is. So that's all I have to say. I'm thrilled. And what a great thing to have an Apple Store on this side of town.
Anybody else thrilled and have anything to say?
Peter, you must be thrilled. Tell us how thrilled you are.
I want to tell you what kind of fun I have. No, I think, I don't really have anything to add. I think I'm looking forward to seeing more on the landscape and pedestrian amenities. Been a lot of talk about what happens on the grounds there for years. We've been involved in discussions having to do with, you know, making other improvements, including things like playgrounds and so on, and that never, you know, and I know there's a real need in that area. And of course, we have property that flanks this park. There are four small parcels that are to the east and west that one was recently improved, and hopefully in the future, we'll continue to make progress on those to complement what happens here. I hope that, I've forgotten where we are on Streetcar, but I know that Streetcar plans included going kind of around this, and there was a north-south line that was going to do things as well. Hopefully those, whatever happens with those, they won't interfere with a robust development here. So that's, I was going to be quiet, but you know, since you, you wanted to know. Anyway, thank you.
Is there a motion on the EDR?
It's all moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of the EDR, CI?
Aye.
Oppose, no? We are thrilled to approve it. Agenda item 5B is the final master plan for the George P. Schultz National Foreign Affairs Training Center in Arlington, and Mr. Gorbich is on his way. I'll note for those present that many of us toured the Schultz Training Facility a couple months ago. It was a very worthwhile trip. Mr. Gorbich, welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. GSA in coordination with the Department of State has submitted a final master plan for the George P. Schultz National Foreign Affairs Training Center in Arlington, Virginia. They are seeking the commission's final approval on the plan. I want to start with providing a brief overview of the topics that will be covered during today's presentation. I'll be talking through the facility location, planning history, submission materials, existing conditions, master plan proposal, and the transportation management plan. The major components of the master plan have not changed substantially since the commission review in March, so much of this will serve as a refresher. The presentation will then focus on responses to previous commission comments as well as staff recommendations to the commission on the final plan. The National Foreign Affairs Training Center is located in Arlington, Virginia at the intersection of Arlington Boulevard and South George Mason Drive. It serves as the headquarters for the Department of State's Foreign Service Institute, which provides language, cultural, and educational training to foreign service officers from across the federal government. The first campus master plan was developed in 1989 with an update in 2005. This most recent update was submitted as a draft for commission review in March and has been revised and resubmitted for final approval. The 2017 final master plan is the subject of the current review. With this submission, GSA has included the final master plan, an updated transportation management plan, and the final environmental assessment with accompanying finding of no significant impact. I want to next briefly review the existing conditions at the site. The campus is divided into two distinct areas, the main campus, which totals approximately 65 acres, and the west parcel, which is approximately seven acres. The National Guard Bureau occupies a site that sits between these parcels. The current average daily on-campus population is 3,218, which is comprised of 1,370 faculty and staff and 1,848 students. The entire campus complex, including the National Guard Bureau, is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places as Arlington Hall Station Historic District, which has two distinct periods of significance. From 1924 to 1942, it was operated as Arlington Hall Junior College, a girls' finishing school, and then from 1942 to 1989 as the headquarters for the Department of the Army's U.S. Signal Intelligence Service until it was transferred to the Department of State. Four original structures still remain on site, including the historic Old Main, the gymnasium, and two cottages, all of which operate as classrooms or support facilities. Here are a few photos of the existing historic structures with a key map on the bottom left that shows where they sit on the campus. As you can see, they occupy the central campus area, which also maintains a historic quad and grove. This area is generally considered to be the historic central core of the campus. The campus itself has a variety of land uses, including several dedicated garden spaces and a range of natural and design landscapes as shown in light green here. The west campus is shown in yellow. It's publicly accessible recreational space that is maintained by Arlington County under an agreement between the county and Department of State. The campus has 11 existing buildings, which include the visitor center here in purple, the cafeteria in blue, the historic gymnasium in orange, Old Main and the historic quad in pink, classroom buildings and the associated campus meadow area in yellow, the central utility plant and facility management building in brown, the historic cottages and historic grove in green, and the childcare center at the south end of the site. The range of open spaces serve as unifying elements for the campus, creating a garden campus for students that assists with teaching and language learning. Vegetation is grouped into exhibits and features an international garden at the south end of the campus. In addition to educational purposes, the landscape also serves as stormwater treatment and provides a larger ecological benefit through the use of pollinator species. As indicated on this map, the campus is heavily landscaped with mature trees, especially to the north where the historic grove is located. And in terms of historic and environmental resources, you'll note the red dashed line here represents the historic central core of the campus, which includes the four buildings I discussed earlier, as well as a historic bridge, significant oak trees, and other associated features. You'll also note the rain garden areas next to the surface parking lots shown in light blue here on the right. I next want to review the master plan proposal. GSA and Department of State set five goals for the master plan, which include advancing projects from earlier master plans, enhancing security to reflect current threat assessment levels, providing infrastructure projects to support security and training requirements, meeting historic preservation requirements for structures and landscapes, and complying with updated governmental standards. They've also applied several guiding principles to the development of the master plan, which focus on structure and organization of the campus, the density of development on campus, functional relationships between uses on campus, landscape planning, historic resources, site circulation patterns, security planning, stormwater management, and sustainability principles and goals. The master plan proposes an overall 16% increase in campus population by full plan implementation in 2025, from 3,218 to 3,809, with the majority of that change occurring among the student population. Faculty and staff is expected to remain relatively constant. One of the reasons for this change is that the Department of State is consolidating off-site training classrooms that are currently leased in Roslyn. The proposed additions to the campus are highlighted in yellow and include the new perimeter security fencing shown with the X-line throughout the campus. In terms of new square footage, the largest addition is Building B at just over 200,000 square feet, which will sit behind the historic gym building identified as Building D on this map. This location for Building B was approved by the commission in both previous master plans and was a major topic of discussion for the commission on draft review. I'll talk more about this later in the presentation. The yellow area G is an expanded central plant. Expansions F and K include additional classroom space. A is the expansion of the visitor center. And L is the expansion of the childcare facility. All of these additions will add around 310,000 square feet, bringing the campus to just under a million square feet total. I also wanted to share the proposed tree cover in the master plan proposal, which indicates that the vast majority of trees would be retained. The building expansions and new construction would occur in less vegetated areas, and new trees would also be added in key locations. Existing tree cover on this map is in light green with the proposed tree cover in darker green, so new trees in darker green. As noted in the introduction, GSA also submitted an updated transportation management plan. I'll provide a general overview of the plan in this section, and we'll discuss major changes within the context of previous commission comments later. GSA completed the updated TMP in April of 2017. It seeks to develop a program that actively fosters more efficient faculty, staff, and student commuting patterns. There are a variety of ways you can access the site. By vehicle, you can enter through one of two gates on the campus via Route 50 and South George Mason Drive. The northern edge of the campus is about 1.3 miles from the nearest metro station, which is Boston Metro, and approximately 1.5 miles from the center of campus. There are bus routes along Route 50, George Mason Drive, and Glebe Road, and the Department of State provides a shuttle service from private student housing to campus for use by students. Department of State also offers shuttle service from the Roslyn Metro and Truman Building to campus. The shuttle service is generally well-used by students but cannot be used by faculty or staff for commuting purposes per agency policy. Accordingly, the percentage of students that drive alone to campus at approximately 26.5% is significantly lower than the more than 65% of faculty and staff that drive alone. Currently, the campus has 1,690 surface parking spaces, resulting in a parking ratio of one space for every 1.9 employees. The master plan proposes retaining the same amount of parking. Since the population on the campus is proposed to increase by about 600 people, the resulting ratio is one space for every 2.3 employees. The TMP articulates a range of strategies to reduce parking demand and improve the parking ratio, which I'll describe shortly. Staff's analysis of the updated master plan have resulted in recommendations focused on three major topic areas: transportation and parking, historic preservation, and pathways and trails. Commission comments on the draft master plan will be used to frame this portion of the presentation since they were also focused around these primary areas. I would first like to discuss transportation and parking. The NCPC parking ratio for areas within the historic boundaries of the District of Columbia, which includes Arlington County and the NFATC campus, is one parking space per four employees. As noted, the campus currently has a parking ratio of 1 to 1.9 and is expected to reach a future ratio of 1 to 2.3 with the expanded student, faculty, and staff populations expected with full implementation of the master plan. In the draft plan, the applicant had committed to pursuing transportation demand management, or TDM, strategies to reduce parking demand and meet the NCPC 1 to 4 parking ratio in 10 years. In the final plan, however, GSA is asking for more time to reach that goal. They're asking that the commission accept a 10-year goal of 1 to 3 and 20-year goal of 1 to 4. Staff analysis indicates that it's nearly a one and a half mile walk from either the Boston or Virginia Square metro stations to the Arlington Boulevard campus entrance at the north end of the site. Additionally, the TMP notes that once on campus, it's approximately an additional quarter-mile to destination buildings on campus. Staff believes that the distance to metro makes this location relatively unique among federal facilities in Arlington County, as facilities such as the Pentagon, which sits directly adjacent to its own metro station, is held to the same 1 to 4 standard. Accordingly, staff recommends that the commission should consider leniency in the timelines needed to meet the NCPC parking ratio. While staff had noted on draft review that the applicant provided strong TDM measures toward reducing parking demand, they had also expressed concerns with the lack of commitment to reducing parking spaces to meet those goals. Accordingly, the commission had recommended that the applicant develop an action plan to outline a phased approach to the reduction of onsite parking to meet short and long-term parking ratios proposed in the draft TMP. The applicant did not include such an action plan in its final submission. Staff still believes the TMP includes strong TDM measures that could reduce parking demand. Examples of such measures include increasing the use of car pools through ride-matching assistance, preferential parking, and/or reduced parking costs, enhancing shuttle service with simplified schedules and real-time arrival information, increasing awareness of flex hours and guaranteed ride-home initiatives, conducting a feasibility assessment for a new shuttle route that could act as a local circulator and include destinations such as the Boston Metro Station, shopping destinations, parking on the west parcel residential communities. Further, the TMP also includes short and long-term measures of success to track progress toward meeting the NCPC parking ratios. Staff believes that implementation of TDM measures and tracking of progress through stated measures of success would be an effective way to ensure parking ratio goals will be Because of the distance from public transportation, staff recommends that the commission notes that the comprehensive plan for the national capital parking ratio for this campus and the historic boundary of Washington, DC is 1 to 4. However, unlike other areas within the boundary, the campus is more than a mile from the nearest metro station, and therefore accepts the applicant request to extend the NFATC parking ratio goal timeline from 1 to 3 in five years to 1 to 3 in 10 years, and from 1 to 4 in 10 years to 1 to 4 in 20 years. Further, to ensure that the applicant adheres to the commitment to reduce parking demand and improve the parking ratio, staff recommends that the commission requests that the Department of State, in cooperation with GSA, submits a transportation progress report in two years in conjunction with a planned commuter survey update, and again in five years aligned with the short-term measures of success in the TMP. The progress report should provide the commission with a status update on the implementation of transportation demand management strategies presented in the TMP, include an updated commuter survey that demonstrates progress toward reaching mode-split goals described in the TMP, and outlines a gradual approach to reducing surface parking on campus. TMP, and outlines a gradual approach to reducing surface parking on campus that is tied to a decrease in parking demand over time. Next, I'll discuss historic preservation. Commission comments on historic preservation focused on two main issues: the location of Building B, as well as its design. I'd like to start by reviewing the previous Commission comment related to location. In review of the draft, the Commission recommended that the applicant examine alternatives to the proposed massing and possible location of Building B to reduce potential impacts to the historic quad and the natural areas of the campus. Building B is highlighted on this page in red. As you'll notice, the applicant has chosen to retain Building B in the same location, noting several constraints in other areas of the campus. The first major constraint is the location of archaeological test areas, which are highlighted in purple. These areas have been previously undisturbed, and any construction on these sites would require a Phase 1 archaeological survey. Any archaeological discoveries during such a survey could introduce a new historic preservation issue. You'll note the Building G and F expansions encroach on these test areas, but any new building construction would be expected to have a greater impact. The second constraint is the historic area of the campus, which is highlighted here in orange. This area represents the buildings and landscape that comprised the original Arlington Hall Junior College campus, and any new construction could impact the integrity of historic features. The current location of Building B is near the historic gymnasium, Building D, but sits at the edge of the historic campus. The third constraint is natural and landscaped areas, which are highlighted here in green. The section at the south end of the site, near the childcare facility, is a county-designated resource protection area, and the areas in the center of campus are landscaped gathering The fourth constraint is the west campus, highlighted in yellow. As noted earlier, the west campus contains recreational space that is used and maintained by Arlington County and is a significant neighborhood amenity. The last constraint is the surface parking lots, highlighted here in blue. While these areas are primed for future development, GSA has indicated that they're still needed for the time being to accommodate faculty, staff, and students that drive to the Schultz Center campus. Commuter survey results presented in the TMP support this assertion. That said, staff does not believe there's a preferred alternative location for Building B at this time, but surface lots could and should be considered for future development as parking demand is reduced through implementation of the TMP. On review of the draft, the Commission had also expressed concerns related to the design of Building B and its potential impacts on the historic gym. The original placement and massing of Building B can be seen on the right, which shows the five-story building both behind and immediately adjacent to the gym. It could also be seen from both listed and proposed historic districts and adjacent communities. Thus, the Commission recommended on draft review that the visual impacts of Building B on the historic gym and the larger historic context are further minimized to the extent practicable, in consultation with the Virginia State Historic Preservation Office and other stakeholders. In the final master plan, the applicant has taken two primary actions to address the Commission comments related to the design of Building B. The first is to modify sighting and massing of the building to reduce potential impacts to the historic quad and gym. As seen here, the master plan has been revised to indicate more space between the buildings. Building B has been shifted an additional 29 feet south of the gym to a total of 93 feet, and 4 feet to the east to a total of 30 feet. The applicant has also submitted massing diagrams of the revised Building B as a supplement to the master plan. Here you can see a 3D plan view of the proposed Building B and the extent to which it was pulled back from the gymnasium. This view from the northeast shows a perspective view, and includes the taller National Guard Bureau building at the back for context. This view from the historic quad to the north captures another view, and shows how Building B relates in height to the historic gym. And here is another view from the quad to the northwest. GSA has also established a robust Section 106 Design Review Process that will provide all consulting parties an opportunity to review the sighting, massing, and exterior appearance of all proposed buildings and structures, including Building B. This review will generally occur at 35% design completion, and again at 65% if there are outstanding concerns. NCPC is included as a consulting party to the process. As previously noted, staff believes that it is not currently feasible to cite Building B on surface parking lots due to parking demand. However, because parking demand is expected to be reduced through implementation of the TMP, staff recommends that the Commission requests that the applicant strongly consider citing any development proposed in future master plan updates on surface parking lots as implementation of the TMP is able to reduce parking demand at the site. Because of the building modifications in the final master plan, staff further recommends that the Commission notes that the applicant has addressed the Commission's comments regarding the impact of proposed Building B on the historic gym by adjusting the building's general location further away from the historic gym, and establishing a design review process through the Section 106 Programmatic Agreement. Lastly, to ensure the Section 106 review process effectively minimizes the historic preservation impacts of Building B, staff recommends that the Commission requires that, upon submission, the applicant demonstrates that the placement, massing, and height of Building B preserve the strong spatial and visual relationship of the historic gym to the historic campus and associated open spaces. Finally, I'll discuss pathways and trails. There are a series of pathways that traverse the campus, including a publicly accessible jogging bike trail at the south end, that would be closed for security purposes under this master plan. It was introduced in the original 1989 master plan to provide community access to recreational areas on the West Parcel before neighborhood sidewalks were complete. A route along the now-complete neighborhood sidewalks would add 1,335 feet to the trip to the West Parcel, or an additional five-minute walk. The adjacent community has expressed a strong interest in maintaining dedicated trail access. On review of the draft, the Commission recommended that the applicant work with Arlington County to address community concerns related to the removal of the trail at the south end of the site, including exploring strategies to maintain access on federal property or to provide access on adjacent county property. Since that time, a proposal has come forward from the local community to create new access along the eastern edge of the facility. This map illustrates the new proposal, which would require a land exchange or easement on federal property that is highlighted in green. Another version of this map has been provided by a representative of the Alcoa Heights Citizen Association, which has been placed at the dais if you'd like to take a closer look. The proposal would require that the fence line is shifted approximately 20 feet to allow for pedestrian and bicycle access along this route. While it would not provide an exact replacement of the original trail alignment, it would offer continued neighborhood access in the same general area. Staff has heard from community members both in support of this proposal, as well as in opposition. Both views are represented at the meeting today, and will be speaking at the conclusion of the presentation. Staff has spoken with representatives of Arlington County, who have indicated that they are still working to determine the viability of creating new trail access in this area, and they will come forward with a proposal feasible. GSA has said they're willing to work with the county should a formal proposal come NCPC staff believes that Commission concerns regarding the trail have been addressed to the extent possible at this time, and recommends that the Commission notes that conversations are ongoing regarding alternative trail access, and that the applicant has committed to further engage if Arlington County presents a formal proposal in the future. In conclusion, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approves the National Foreign Affairs Training Center 2017 Master Plan Update, notes that the applicant has addressed the Commission's comments regarding the impact of the proposed Building B on the historic gym, requires that the applicant demonstrates that the placement, massing, and height of Building B preserve the relationship of the historic gym to the historic campus and open spaces, requests that the applicant consider citing development in future master plan updates on surface parking lots, notes that NCPC parking ratio in this area is 1 to 4, however, the campus is more than a mile from the nearest metro rail station, accepts the applicant request to extend the NFATC parking ratio goal timeline, requests that the applicant submits a transportation progress report in two years, and again in five years, that provides updates on implementation of the TMP, and notes that the applicant has committed to further engage on alternative trail access in the future. With that, I conclude my presentation and am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorbich. Let's go to public comment, if less than anybody has any burning question at the moment. On public comment, we have two signed up. The first is Danielle Aragoni. She represents Alcoa Heights Citizens Association, and you will have five minutes, and you will be followed by Maria Cunningham. So Ms. Aragoni, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Danielle Aragoni. I'm a resident of Alcoa Heights neighborhood, in which the National Foreign Affairs Training Center is located. I'm here today speaking on behalf of our Citizens Association. We have a number of concerns with the changes that are proposed for the Training Center. We disagree with the conclusion in the NFATC environmental assessment that closure of the path between George Mason Drive and Quincy Street represents a non-significant environmental impact. In fact, it would eliminate a significant route for pedestrian bicyclists that provides connectivity in an area that is otherwise interrupted by the NFATC campus. The EA cites the existence of sidewalks on adjacent streets, but these represent a much longer and hillier travel option. In a letter regarding the issue, GSA references a dirt path cut through in Alcoa Heights Park, which is not officially a county path at all. It is not maintained as such, and it is often muddy and impassable, nor does it directly connect with George Mason Drive, which is on the other side of Dr. Shun Creek, as the current path does. The neighborhood is concerned about the loss of what has traditionally been a popular sledding hill, located partly on land currently owned by Arlington County and partly on federal land. Under the current master plan, it appears that new fencing would render the hill unstable by the community's children. We requested in our final EA comments that the fence follow a different alignment that will allow the hill to continue to be used for sledding. We provided a drawing showing how the fence could be constructed to provide the required setback for the childcare facility while leaving the hill for the neighborhood kids. We are seriously concerned about increased traffic and parking issues that will result from the expansion of the facility. The EA indicates that there will be minimal impact to traffic, and that there's no need for additional parking. We question these findings when the improvements will result in a 50% increase in the building space and a nearly 20% increase in the neighborhood personnel. All of the existing onsite parking is currently being utilized. The EA contends that the transportation management plan will negate the need for any additional parking, while at the same time it admits that there will be an increase in traffic. Where is that additional traffic expected to park? The Army made similar promises when they expanded their adjacent facility six years ago. Unfortunately, traffic problems have increased significantly since the facility was occupied. Traffic now backs up most mornings on George Mason Drive, and parking spills down George Mason as far as 8th Street. As a result, we are convinced that our traffic woes will worsen, and more parking will spill into the community, into our community, with the completion of the expansion. The final EA states that the visual and aesthetic impact of the new perimeter fence is considered to be minimal. However, no information has been provided that details the impact of the construction of the fence. Given that it runs through wooded areas adjacent to quite a few of our homes, the potential for damage or even removal of trees seems likely. However, the EA is silent on the matter, and equally silent on what remediation would be performed to restore those areas once construction is complete. Our residents who live adjacent to the NFATC are subject now to light and noise pollution from the facility, with more development proposed. Maintaining a healthy forested buffer is critical to reducing the light pollution from the parking lot lighting systems, and reducing the noise from the traffic on the property. Not only does the existing tree buffer need to be better maintained and managed, but additional trees need to be added along the perimeter between Quincy and 3rd Street. We also ask that the back gate at Quincy Street be permanently closed so that the short section of county-owned roadway between the gate and 6th can be abandoned and turned into green space. That gate is never open, and is supposedly needed for emergency access. However, there are two other gates in the facility that open onto major roads rather than a neighborhood street. The area immediately outside of the gate is a problem for the community. Federal workers inappropriately park there. It also is used for illicit activities after dark. This section of roadway is immediately adjacent to the previously mentioned sledding hill. Turning it into green space would greatly enhance the area and benefit our community. We request that approval of the master plan be contingent on requiring that GSA work with Arlington County and our association on ways to mitigate these concerns, specifically providing an alternate path from Quincy to George Mason Drive, developing a plan to retain community access to the sledding hill, mitigating problems with increased parking and traffic, restoring wooded areas that are impacted by the construction of the new perimeter fence, improving and adding to the landscaping to provide a better buffer, and permanently closing the Quincy Street gate. We thank you for your time and your consideration.
Ms. Cunningham, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. It is an honor to speak with you today. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Maria Cunningham. I am a homeowner who has lived on the perimeter of the NFATC campus for 14 years. I'm speaking as an individual citizen. First, I want to thank the NFATC for being a very good neighbor over the years. I want to also thank the GSA for considering community concerns during the NFATC's EA and master plan comment periods. I want to thank you, Commission members and staff, for recommending a formal proposal process as the next step for engagement regarding alternative trail access. Bearing in mind the NFATC's goals and efforts to enhance perimeter security and protect the environment on campus, please consider adding the following recommendation. As a prerequisite for consideration, alternative trail access proposals must neither worsen the current level of NFATC's perimeter security, nor undo the positive environmental effects that are documented in NFATC's 2016 environmental assessment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we have everybody's comments at the record for us. That ends our public comment session, and we will turn the matter to Commission members. Discussion. Mr. May.
Sure, okay. So, first of all, I do appreciate the responsiveness that's been demonstrated in the final plan compared to the comments that we had last time around. I think we were all very concerned about Building B in particular, and some of the other aspects of the plan, the trail, et cetera. So I do appreciate the work that's been done by GSA and State Department to try to move this in a positive direction. And I think that, with particular regard to Building B, it certainly is better than it was before, but I still see that there are significant issues with it. And I think one of the things that troubles me the most is that the issues seem to be driven by the need to preserve parking lots. And so first, I guess I have a question about that. We talked about the fact that we expect that the demand for parking will be reduced over time with transportation demand management strategies, but what is the sequencing, the anticipated sequencing of projects? Is Building B first up, or are some of these other additions going to be happening earlier?
Building B should be first up, but, and I would also add to the EDR that one of the reasons that the Building B location, I guess you gave three reasons. A fourth is, you know, aside from, like it or not, the current need for parking, building out, sort of, we're feeling pretty good about the idea of keeping the development as compact as possible, and not, you know, putting a marker out on the perimeter so that it consigns the remaining parking lot for future developments for certain. So that doesn't answer your question, but I took the opportunity to add that.
You know, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think it's, given the relatively compact concentration of buildings, I understand that approach. However, it is, I mean, it really is a sea of parking, and I think that there are, you know, while there are concerns that relate to, you know, the potential for archaeological issues and so on, I mean, those are concerns, but they're manageable as well. But again, so you're saying that what's marked as F and K here on this plan are likely to occur after Building B?
Well, first up will be the childcare center, which is Building L. And then, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is B is next.
Well, childcare, then the perimeter security upgrades, and then...
Right. So that's the sequence. I think we have heard from some of the community, too, who would prefer to, if... I think we have heard from some of the community, too, who would prefer to maintain the parking lots, believe it or not, as a buffer zone between it and the development. All of it together makes sense, oddly enough, but we have looked at it very carefully and put the team through the paces in terms of location because we did listen. We did consider, we were asked to consider a new location, we did, but we all kind of end up with Building B in its current place. The most important thing, it seems to me, in terms of massing, is to pull it away from the gym and keep control over the height. And it's, as you remember, a difficult site. There's a significant grade change.
Right. So, and really, what I'm thinking in terms of the, you know, the potential use of parking lots is driven by the same concept, which is to push it further away from Building D, from the historic gym. And the parking lot that's immediately below that on the map that we see here, which I guess is south, it's not, it wouldn't damage that sort of buffering concept in terms of the impact on the neighborhood, I think, nearly as much as if you tried to put it back behind Building F or something like that. Not to mention the fact that it keeps it proximate to where people are arriving and so on. You know, I just, I feel like there should be some further consideration of that. It's unfortunate that the sequencing of building construction doesn't give you enough room to try to address the parking question as the site is developed. That's, I think that's the only thing I'm trying to say. And I'm not saying this because I'm recommending that we make substantial changes to the EDR, but I think that I want to make sure that the concerns are heard. I mean, Building B is definitely better than it was in the last iteration. It's still not very good, and the fact that it was previously approved as a, in a master plan by this commission doesn't mean that it was necessarily any good whatsoever. In fact, if you look at past actions of the commission, you might see some very bad things that we're now trying to undo. So I, you know, I wouldn't necessarily just go by that. I do think that there's more work to be done.
I don't think that was my suggestion, just for the record.
I understand.
Thank you. Please continue.
No, it was just, it was in the EDR, that's all. And I do believe that the Section 106 process as it moves forward will be helpful if, in fact, the building, you know, the building at Location B truly does go forward. I mean, I think there is an opportunity to build a building there that can be appropriately sized and can make sense in terms of the plan. I just feel like what's there right now in terms of the overall mass is very, very large for it and would cramp the building. I also think that the shadow of the National Guard property, I assume that was something that was reviewed by this commission, too, right? Yeah, so, okay, enough said. Not that it's a bad building in its own, it's a fine building in its own, it just looks...
The citing is a little off.
Citing is a little problematic, yeah. Especially in terms of its impact on this campus, right? So, anyway, I'll try to stop babbling on and on. I do have a question about the shuttle issue, which is cited as something that employees cannot use the shuttle bus as a matter of policy, but then you also are recommending that additional shuttle routes be done. So first of all, I want to understand what the policy is that prevents that. I mean, we have shuttle buses and we use them for our employees in the Department Interior and the Park Service, and I'm sure other agencies do that as well. It just seems rather odd.
Yeah, this was actually in conversations with Department of State. They had noted that it was an agency policy that, or a department policy, that we couldn't use them for community purposes, so...
So, I mean, but what, do you know anything about what drives that policy and whether it's possible to get an exception?
Adam, you want to address this?
Hello, Adam Bodmer, State Department.
I'm Director of Real Property Management. It's an issue that we have agreed, are agreeing to look at, again, to review those policies against using state transportation to enhance employee commuting activities. That historically was a problem of people driving to the campus and then parking for very low cost and using the department, government shuttles to get into Roslyn and Foggy Bottom. But as part of the transportation management plan, we are going to relook at those and relook at the methodologies that we use for parking at the campus overall.
So this is not a department-wide policy as much as it is something that's specific to this campus?
No, I think it does affect all of our shuttle, our whole shuttle system.
So you have a shuttle system across the department, and it serves only, I mean, it can't serve employees here, but can it serve employees elsewhere?
It can, but what, I mean, our primary locations are Foggy Bottom and Roslyn.
Right.
And then the NFATC. So that's the circle that the shuttles operate in.
So you have a shuttle that runs between all of them?
Yes.
And those are used by employees?
Yes.
And, but you can't use them to shuttle people to and from Metro?
Correct, that's the policy, for commuting purposes.
All right, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that there's some work to be done there because it just seems like it's in the best interest of the agency and the employees to have a policy that fosters the use of public transit and would reduce some of the traffic concerns that we know we heard from the neighbors, would reduce the need for the parking. And, you know, we all know that, I mean, this commission is not fond of surface parking lots, and I think generally the trend is away from large service parking lots. So I think that there's a lot of work to be done on that. And I do like the idea of creating new shuttle routes that would facilitate access in and out of here because I imagine, given where this is located and the fact that you can't walk anywhere from here, you can't even walk to the front gate without going a quarter of a mile, right? So nobody's leaving here to go to lunch except by car, and that's probably one of the contributors to traffic, so enough about that. Although maybe it's a good bike share location. Have you looked into that?
We do have those.
The same bike share system?
Yes.
That operates, okay, good, that's great. And then, let's see, has the agency agreed to come back with the reports on, the department agreed to come back to give us reports on progress and on traffic reduction methods?
I mean, we haven't talked specifically about it with the department, though they will be coming back for a review of projects, and we imagine that those will be good opportunities to come back with those two- and five-year updates. And we've also aligned the two-year update with a planned commuter survey. That's something that they had articulated in the TMP that they wanted to do, as well as the five-year kind of goal that they set for themselves with regard to the mode share.
Okay. So, I mean, it would, I don't know if anybody, if you or anyone from the department could actually commit to coming back every two years to give those updates because it's something that's in the EDR and as a recommendation, a request, so it would be good to get that an answer.
I commit to doing that.
Excellent, thank you. And then...
I think we already committed on their behalf, actually.
Okay, but I didn't, maybe I missed it in the report.
Assuming that the EDR passes, that commits us to saying.
Great. I like hearing it from him, too. That's good. All right, so the last thing I just would say is that I find the whole situation with the trail or the loss of that trail to be disconcerting, and it is something where we, I think generally, would like to see greater, or rather increased access across large federal facilities when they're adjacent to neighborhoods and it provides, and it gives them, and there's some neighborhood serving purpose. I also understand the security needs of the agency, so finding the right balance can be a difficult proposition, but I would strongly encourage Department of State, GSA, and the neighbors, and the county to work together to find appropriate solutions that best meet the needs of all and don't create just large fenced-off compounds and with U.S. government, no trespassing signs on them, as we sometimes see. That's it for me, thank you.
Mr. Cash?
I just wanted to follow up briefly. I don't know if we can go back to that same map that we were at that shows kind of the entire campus. I mean, talking about buses, I mean, shuttle buses, I think, are a great thing, but I'm someone that lives in the city, hasn't had a car for several years, and I've made a point to try and figure out, I can get anywhere in the region by bus, by Uber, all that kind of stuff. But on this map, up in the northeast corner near Building J, that's, I believe, Glebe Road, which is right over there, and there's a bus stop literally right there next to that white building just outside the campus that has five Metro, or four Metro bus lines and one Arlington County bus line. And it seems like, I mean, taking into account more bus service, not just Womata Metro stations, maybe there could be a creative idea to have some kind of access to get through the campus up there. I mean, there's several buildings, but I mean, I think that just looking at a Metro line or a Metro rail station isn't always useful when, I mean, there's a lot of seven-day-a-week Metro buses that run, I mean, probably 100 feet from the campus if not for having a way to get in and out of the campus up there. So I just wanted to say that, I think that it's useful to look at more than just Metro rail and shuttles.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Gallus?
I won't be so long, but I wanted to also, I do respect the interests of the community to want to be able to use pathways to get to public spaces and especially in a neighborhood where they're used to having that, and now we're taking it away, or someone's taking it away, in the interest of security. And I know there can be creative ways to solve that, and I agree with Peter to urge everyone to try to work that out. The second thing is, as we're looking at Building B, which kind of looks like Texas a little bit to me, maybe a little, you know, I was pretty vocal about the relationship of that to Building D in the draft, and I certainly do appreciate the work that's been done to pull it back and allow Building D to breathe because I feel like, you know, Commissioner May, when you talked about other bad decisions maybe in the past, I would say that what happened with Building C in that arcing part that comes into the historic quad might have been one of those mistakes, in my opinion. But from where I'm sitting, it is the historic quad that is the more important perspective in terms of what's happening with Building B, and I think pulling the building back away from D and allowing it to breathe and feeling like that quad carries through to almost the back of Building D is, I think, a significant improvement. I do agree that, you know, when we see the building that's going to be designed and proposed for B, we want to just make sure and urge that there's sensitivity to its massing, its height, all the things that have been said, but I just want to express appreciation for the sensitivity to the comments. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. The action before us is to approve the final master plan with comments as their motion on the EDR. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gorbich. The last item on the agenda is an information presentation on a small parks study that was conducted by the National Park Service and NCPC. This is a tallying report as it will inform the agency's current efforts to update the parks and open space policies in the comp plan. We have Ms. Singh.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Commission. The National Park Service, in collaboration with NCPC, recently completed a study on small urban parks in the National Capital Region. I'm going to provide a brief overview on this Small Parks Management Strategies Report before I turn the presentation over to Ms. Tammy Stidham of National Park Service, who will be giving the information presentation. The Small Parks Management Strategies Report builds upon the Capital Space Plan, which was approved by NCPC in 2010. One of the recommendations from the Capital Space Plan focused on the planning and management of small parks to transform them into a connected network of successful public spaces. On a side note, DCOPE is working on a similar small park study addressing the district-owned parks. NCPC is also in the process of updating the parks and open space element of the comprehensive plan, and the small park study will help inform policies on this update as well as guide future review of projects at small urban parks. The study identified approximately 300 small parks under the jurisdiction of NPS that ranged from less than one acre to seven acres in size. Many of these small parks are the result of the urban design framework established by the LaFonte and McMillan Plans and contribute to the green character of Washington. The LaFonte and the McMillan Plans are the ones shown here on the left. Small parks serve multiple functions, including sites for national and local commemoration, neighborhood parks, playgrounds, traffic circles, street medians, and traffic islands. When viewed individually, small parks may seem disconnected from the larger open space network, but they provide opportunities for environmental and recreational benefits while complementing the larger park system. With this, I would like to introduce Ms. Tammy Stidham, who will provide details on the methodology and results of the study. She will also answer any questions on behalf of National Park Service.
Good afternoon. I am Tammy Stidham. I'm the Chief of Planning for the National Capital Region and the National Park Service. I'm here today to talk to you about our Small Parks Management Strategy that we recently completed in conjunction with NCPC. Before I get started, I thought it might be useful if I went over a few park statistics related to the District of Columbia, just to give you some context about the relation of the parks that we study to the district as a whole. So 20% of the district is covered in parkland, and they range in size from anywhere from 50 acres to less than an acre, and the majority of those parks are less than one acre. Of that 20%, the National Park Service manages 90% of the parkland in the district, which equates to about 350 reservations, a little more than 8,400 acres, and also includes the beds of the river of the Potomac and the Anacostia River, which is a little-known fact. So I'm sure when you think about parks, National Park Service sites in the District of Columbia, you probably think about the many monuments and memorials located in the National Mall or about the very large natural open spaces of Rock Creek Park in Anacostia. I doubt you think about the circles, squares, and triangles that are scattered about the city, but these, too, are National Park Service sites. And there are a lot of great things about these sites. They are often the most important park spaces within the city. They are, they provide a variety of amenities, not only to city residents, but to our visitors. Often, they provide things that the larger parks are unable to or don't make sense to be there. However, there are a lot of challenges associated with so many tiny little parks scattered across the city. They are separate from our larger MPS units, making it difficult for staff to manage and to take care of. They are managed by three separate Park Service superintendents, as you see here in this map, all with different backgrounds, different partners, different competing needs. And these sites aren't easily identified as Park Service sites, and they often are considered vacant property. So why develop a small park strategy? Most of this came out of the fact of the challenges that I just mentioned and the need for a more cohesive, coherent management between park superintendents. We were having... park superintendents. We were having situations where a circle on one side of town, things were being allowed, or different management practices were taking place, while a circle of exact same size and shape on the other side of town was being managed much differently. So how do you manage these more cohesively across the system? So you can't talk about any effort without having a process slide. So working with our consultant, we developed a process to evaluate and to determine some management strategies and tools for our park superintendents. The first step in the process was to develop an inventory. We had a pretty good inventory of all of our sites, but when it comes to smaller parks, there's less information known. For this effort, we ended up looking at 292 parcels that ranged in size from much more than an acre to less than a tenth of an acre. The next step was determine what we knew about these spaces. What are their stories? Why are they here? Why are they part of the park system? What resources do they have there, and how are they currently being used by other people? We developed a GIS later for small parks that included an attribute table of a huge amount of information that was present in each park. And this list is just a short piece of what is behind the GIS data that we prepared. All of this in an effort to better understand these spaces and how they are used. Also, a part of our evaluation of these parks, we developed criteria that we use to rate each park on how well that park aligns or fits with the NPS mission, core values, and the park purpose. We use nine criteria. A score of 70 or above was considered to be highly aligned with the Park Service mission. A score of less than 30 was considered to be less or more weakly aligned. Overall, more than half, more, 80% of the parks ended up being either highly aligned or mainly aligned to the Park Service mission. I must add, this criteria was based on just what we know today, and it expected, and it will change, because as the sites develop more or more amenities take place, or possibly memorials go in, that shifts the criteria and would shift the scoring. As we were working through the inventory, the Park Service superintendents worked together to develop a shared vision about these sites. As you can see here, they acknowledge that these are diverse parks with a wide range of resources and amenities. And I think, as you've all heard before, the Park Service is in the forever business. I'm sure you've heard that more than once. And that we are committed to these being high-quality spaces and assets for the city, for both our visitors and city residents in perpetuity. To help achieve this vision, NPS developed eight goals. We also developed 23 action items that align to five different topic areas, all which will help us move towards the vision for the future of these parks. Through this process, we did develop a new understanding of these parks, and we also developed a vision for the management of these small spaces. But we needed to pull together tools for our superintendents to use in order for them to make the best management decisions possible. So while these spaces share a common size relatively, they all have different resources, and they all became part of this park system for different reasons. So not one management tool will fit every tiny park. So we looked at a spectrum of management options, everything from NPS sole management through a wide range of different types of partnership opportunities to actual conveyance of NPS interests. And all of this to prepare the superintendents to know what the full toolbox is at their disposal. The other tool that we developed as part of this effort is a graphic interface that's based on GIS, but is linked to a variety of databases and servers, so that park staff can query individual reservations or query criteria around certain reservations to see what fits, in order for them to answer questions and to provide superintendent with good recommendations when looking at management options. So in short, this document is a result of a two-year effort. It is not a document that will be making decisions about how specific management will take place for any one park. But what it does do, it gives the Park Service framework for more coordinated and cohesive management for small parks, and the proper tools for superintendents to manage decisions about small parks. So that was really quick, but if you have any questions.
It's Mr. Dixon.
Yes, very fine. This makes me reflect back a number of years to the Mini McLendon Park on Northwest Washington, a community park that was sort of adopted. So my question goes to that. How effective is it in getting communities to sort of kick in and take these parks? I know you can't take them from you forever, because then you're forever, but in terms of managing them and using them, have you had much luck with that? Does it work?
We've had a wide range of luck and not so much luck. It depends on the community group, and it also depends on how long that community group stays in existence. All it takes is one very dedicated, enthusiastic member to leave the group, and the interest wanes. But, you know, then another group often comes back. So we've had mixed, but in general, we've had very good partnerships with community groups, and they've been very effective in helping us.
Do you document the partnerships? Is there a way you could create some kind of a rather meaningful but not too legal instrument to connect these, so that there's a sense of not ownership, but connection to the park by a community group, you know?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I mean, if you were asked if you want to take on a park in a community, you have to basically set up some kind of an organization around it that has some status that may have life beyond the individuals?
There are a variety of ways. Let me scroll back to this diagram.
That was my question, too, because do you, does Park Service have gift receipt authority?
We are allowed, we have an authority to receive donations.
You do? Across the board?
Across the board.
Is that, so the Trust for the National Mall raises money theoretically, and
Actually.
Well, I'm just theoretically across the, you know.
Yes.
They're one big group, but so do you have 501(c)(3)'s that pop up and partner with you, what percentage of the parks, do you think?
I don't even think I could ballpark what the percentage. I mean, I know that we have dozens and dozens of groups across the city that we work with, and we have different structures, sort of legal structures that we work with. There's a standard, you know, basic friends agreement for below a certain threshold of expenditure, and then we have more complicated ones, going all the way up to the Trust of the National Mall, where it's a huge legal agreement, and there are all sorts of subsidiary agreements that allow them to actually perform work for us. So they don't just raise the money, but they'll actually execute construction projects for us. But we do this in a wide range of ways. Sometimes it's small community groups, sometimes it is, you know, adjacent property owners, sometimes it's an amalgam and involves district agencies as well. So it's, I mean, it's really quite a range of things. We get help from a lot of areas, and most of the time, it's quite welcome. Occasionally, we get suggestions for things that we would never undertake, and we have to politely but firmly say no. But there are, I mean, it's a great way for us to accomplish things that we otherwise could not accomplish.
Yeah, Peter, I think that it's a way to help anchor the community, too, in some respects.
Absolutely.
If you get a commitment in writing of some kind that says, if you take this park on, then you have some kind of legal requirement that you're going to keep your organization existing, you can't make people do that, but still encourage it, and then it becomes an anchor.
Right.
And I know a few that seem to be recurring, like there's a park out in Anacostia where we have a tree every year, and you probably wear that, and they're all over the place. But, you know, I think it's just a great way to also be an anchor for communities. So as new people come in, whatever they come, they begin part of it. They say, wow, we've got to be a part of this thing.
Yeah, we relish those opportunities. It takes work, because we have to still manage that, the work that they do, and we have to go through the compliance processes if we're going to be making changes. We have to have things reviewed by this commission and by Commission of Fine Arts if we get, you know, substantial enough. But, yeah, it's a big thing for us, and we appreciate the love that neighbors show for their nearby parks. In fact, many of them come to us, no matter whose park it is, whether it's in district control or ours, and I often sort of field those questions. Who's responsible for this parcel, and what can we do to fix it up, and so on?
There's also another park area down on Pennsylvania Avenue. There's a restaurant there. I won't get into specifics. You probably know, that wants to take over some of the space so they can have a larger outdoor.
Third East in Pennsylvania, yes.
I just, I don't know, it just seemed to me that the space wasn't having much value. But, you know, I know there's always a downside to these things that I need to be aware of.
Yeah, you know, that particular one has come up from time to time, and very often what we find is that when we start asking questions, and the interest, there is enough staying power there to do anything. That came up when the council member for Ward Six brought it up to my attention nine years ago, and it just sort of, the interest kind of petered out.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How's the love thermometer since the election? Are you, I mean, there's a very active alt-NPS movement, and are you feeling that in donations or attention to the parks locally?
I don't
I mean, that's a real question. I'm just curious, because it would seem that there would, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk, but is there a lot of resources coming with the talk?
You know, honestly, I don't know if there's been any change in donation levels as a result of that. I think that there, I mean, there certainly have been expressions of support that have come our way. I don't know enough to know that it's any different from what's happened during other changes or any other controversial issues that have come up. I mean, you know, we, sometimes the actions that are undertaken by the Park Service are loved and enjoyed, and sometimes they are, they're not.
Not.
And it causes controversy, right? And I, it's just such a long list of things where we've taken actions that we think are in the best interest, long-term interest, but interfere with somebody's immediate local use and enjoyment. And so, you know, we always have to try to balance those things.
Mr. Chairman, Peter knows I've been concerned about our resource for parks in probably not as large a manner as others, but significantly, I think. And the one problem we run into is coming from a jurisdiction that has no, it's a home rule issue. We don't have any benefits to give to companies that may want to support parks and maybe other things, because they want access to political people. They'd be glad to put a park in Baltimore or someplace, because they want to be able to, they can access a congressional person or a senator who can help them when issues come before them. And that's why they don't do it just out of the goodness of their heart. They want to create access and be in the game. But in DC, we don't have that benefit. I don't know that I'm overstating that or not, but, you know, when you go out and you say, let's help raise some money for us from some major corporation, and they say, okay, but they'd much prefer to give to a state where they can get a vote in a committee when they need that.
Right.
And they strategically do that. So I think it's part of not being at the table and being on the menu type of thing.
You know, I think that's part of it, but I also think, and Commissioner Wright knows this from our common experience in an earlier life when we both worked for a nonprofit organization in Washington, that Washington does not have the philanthropic history because it's been a government town. And so you don't have those very large old-money foundations that support the arts and support. Now, we do have, you know, we have more of that now than we did 20 years ago, and certainly the Park Service has been specifically fortunate very recently with donations from David Rubenstein to support our work, and that's a huge, huge thing for us. And of course, he's quite generous to the Smithsonian, to the Kennedy Center, many other organizations, and we certainly actively encourage that.
Further discussion anymore? Additional questions for Ms. Stidham?
Okay. Just ask one follow-up question, because we looked at Franklin Park, and that was a, I would call it a joint venture. Maybe it fits into your transfer administrative jurisdiction. How is that going? Does that fit into, is that being expedited now that you understand all these potential management options?
So this particular project didn't affect that, but one of the items on the spectrum there is a cooperative management agreement, which we have fully negotiated with the district at this point, and we're prepared to sign. The district has had some complications on the legal side of that, but I believe they're taking steps to address that. So hopefully we'll get that signed shortly, and I think it's in the, at least it was in the mayor's budget to fund design and construction. And I'm not sure about the start. Do you recall what?
I believe it was '18. We're currently reviewing the solicitation package.
Yeah, that's for design work, right?
Design work.
Yeah, okay. So hopefully that'll move forward expeditiously.
Thank you.
So first of all, I want to thank Tammy and for all of her efforts in this. She's been, you know, I think the idea for this project in particular grew out of Capital Space, which Tammy was connected to from the beginning. When I started this job, I didn't have a planner. I didn't have a chief of planning, and what I had was Tammy working on Capital Space as the GIS program person. And so she's progressively taken on more responsibilities and taken on many special projects. And after many years now, is our chief of planning, so I'm very pleased to have her here doing this. And I've been, if she was not doing this thing, I would be curled up in a ball under my desk, because it's just, she's a powerhouse, and not just for the region, but also, I think, has been an example for the entire Park Service about what you can do with limited resources. And I also want to thank the NCPC staff who worked on this over the years, because they were heavily involved in this. This project was actually funded in part by NCPC dollars, so we appreciate all the work that you all did to contribute to it as well. And I want to thank our consultant, if he's still there, yeah, Alan Harwood. I don't want to make a habit of every month thanking AE Com. Well, maybe I should. Because we thanked him last month, but in particular, Alan, you and your staff for the work on this.
Alan's always here.
Alan's always here. It seems for 30 years now. He just shared that this is his 30th anniversary with the company, so. And I think most of them have been working on projects for the Park Service and NCPC, or at least a lot of it. So anyway, thank you, Alan, your team. That's it.
I think this is great. I had no idea.
Well, it was
I mean, I had an idea, but I didn't realize that you, that it was so extensive.
It's really complicated. In fact, Capital Space 10 years ago was, I think, trying to do some of these things and didn't, it was hard to do, and there were other more immediate things that could be the focus, and I think that's what happened. It's been a long time in the making.
It was one of the big ideas out of Capital Space.
Exactly.
Just to look more closely at the small parks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stidham, very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you more.
Yes, that's right. We're off to a park dedication, not one of ours. Do you want to talk about the park?
I do not.
Okay, anyway. So the first park is opening up down at the Werf Development.
All right. Thank you all very much for very good and productive commission meetings. We'll see you next month.